Oops.
I have none.
No changes? No, Tim, nobody? In the public for items not related to the agenda? Announcements and staff report.
I have, I have an announcement.
Could you turn your mic so Sue can hear you?
Sure, I have an announcement. I actually just yesterday completed a Clean and Green article that's going to show up and kind of learned a lot about commuter buses in the process. So look for that, MJ Real, kind of she posts them, so I don't know exactly when it's happening. It might be as soon as this this next this next other paper.
Right?
But yeah, and so I learned also emphasize the difference between micro transit and commuter buses. They are not the same thing. Yeah. And the other thing I just wanted an announcement is that unless something happens to to stop it, the the residential building energy standards is going into effect July 1st. And the only reason I mentioned that is because nobody knows it. It's like the best kept secret builders haven't had any training on it. It hasn't been published. There's no way you can get a copy of it. You can get you can get kind of the modifications. I printed out like a portion of the modifications to the code, but it's just like the state has completely just dropped them all. They've updated codes, but they aren't training anybody on it and they aren't updating. There's no outreach at all, nothing. So I in in that this does affect the city because the, you know, the code forms, the code compliance forms, the city collects. I don't know if those have been updated. So just kind of putting a little bit of you might get questions from builders then or or the builders don't want to know that it's been updated and
Right.
You know, so it's it's just kind of one of those things. It's irksome.
Can can I ask Paul a question? Paul, as a follow up to that or Kelsey? I don't know which one. I'm curious if that's training for that. Is that something that CCRPC? It seems like that would be a logical place in Chittenden County to have someone who has staff and we do pay them money and they could train it, provide a training, maybe they can even charge for it. I don't know, but.
Yeah, the well, the training is usually done by somebody that, you know, the state pays efficiency Vermont or some other contractor to do it. But they don't go to the builders, you know, they have one or two trainings, you know, in the state and the builders have to come to them and everybody knows in the summertime that will not happen.
Sure.
So, you know, it just, you know, there's just nobody's dedic- there's just no money dedicated to to training.
That's that's tough. I there was some level of a contract back in the last round in 2020 with with efficiency Vermont VEIC to do some work, but I don't know to what extent they they did outreach. That's certainly something we can we can ask them about.
It would be good to.
Certainly of interest to everyone.
It would be good to ask the builders, you know, to when they're coming in for permits. Are you aware that the code has updated and are you interested in the training?
Right.
Can you do one on a notification list of training? It just it just seems like just like the state is just assuming that builders will follow all this because it's the law, but it's I think that, you know, the the last go around, the compliance was really, really low, like 33% or less for RVs.
Well, we have a contact with the Public Service Department. At a minimum, we can find out what they are doing and share the share that with folks who come in, so.
Is that an update that the what the DRB would need?
No, I mean, it's important for us to all be aware of what's happening, but the DRB doesn't doesn't really regulate the inside of buildings. The only thing, the only real connection point that we have, two connection points is solar ready roofs, which we mandate that there be solar on top of that building when it's mandated to be a solar ready roof, so it connects into the into that and the draft that you're currently looking at, which is to go one step above the minimums of EV charging. So in that sense, we'd need to be aware, but it's not a DRB per se.
Okay. So if they don't follow those rules, who catches them? Nobody? It's just, it's like eh?
Presumably, a homeowner can sue the builder if it didn't meet the standard, but I don't think it's ever happened.
Right. Thank you.
I have a couple of items if if you're ready, Paul.
Sure.
So one is that today I attended along with councillor Barrett, the grand opening of 112 Garden Street, which is the building that is immediately next to Healthy Living. Hundred and twenty apartments in there, partnership with between Snyder Braveman and University of Vermont Medical Center. I was talking with Dr. Lefler, the head of the medical center, and he was saying that there's a whole committee that is established to help sort of work through all the, there are more applicants than there are spaces and work through all their different, you know, metrics for how they identify so that they get across that there's a lot of equal opportunity for folks to be in these in this housing and councillor Barrett spoke very well to it. There's also going to be, there's a small commercial space that's that is set up there. They there's not a tenant just yet, but there is a space for it and there is also a 5,000 square foot childcare facility. I think they said 70 kids that they are have an agreement that they described with one of the childcare providers and they're hoping to get the kids in there this fall, so.
Oh, that's great.
Very exciting. Yep. The second piece that I wanted to share was is more directly about the planning commission and that's I just wanted to give a specific public thank you to Fran McDonald for his service on the planning commission. The council took the action last week of appointing Jessica and a new person named Colin Lawrence. Colin Lawrence, who will be joining us at the next meeting when the terms become effective. And I just wanted to take a chance. You and I spoke offline a little while ago, but Fran, you hit a really good year where you adopted our vision for the next decade, set a whole series of regulations that are just about to launch that are really transformational in in many ways. And so I just wanted to say thank you so much for all of your work for us.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks. Yeah, I I really enjoyed the the year. It was, I mean, there was a lot of things that we covered, a lot of things that we discussed, a lot of work that Kelsey did at night, I'm sure. But it was really enjoyable and I really, it was a good, really good time, I think, to be on the commission. Thanks.
Those were my two announcements. Sure. Can you speak into the mic so that those online can hear as well?
Yeah, I also want to thank you, Francis. My sister and I worked at McDonald's when we were in high school and she said, gosh, I wish everyone could work behind this counter before they come to order. It would just make a big difference. And I wish everyone, I know we can't, but I wish everyone could have this experience that you had Fran of like being here and seeing the complexity of even a municipality of 20,000 people, you know, it's so small in the grand scheme of things, but there's a lot of moving parts. And you just got to wonder like if more people got to see this, how much more engaged would everyone be? And there's a certain excitement and synergy around it. So I'm glad that you've been kind of sucked in and I hope that you continue to feel kind of sucked in, even though you don't have to come every week. I hope you feel a little bit of that like extra like, oh, I know what's going on and.
There's some things that I'm interested in hearing about, yeah.
Right? Yeah. So I and I hope everyone feels that way, however long you stay on it, because the more we have people here engaged thoughtfully, like the better off our whole community is. So thank you very much.
Hey, LDR updates, the planning commission reports. And I assume this is the consolidation of the 10 and two. Three or four.
This is the the reports themselves. So at a previous meeting, we talked about conceptually how we'd proposed to structure all of the things that were changing in the LDRs into sort of manageable, understandable categories. So in this agenda, two things happened. One, I took feedback from the planning commission to then further group those those 10 to really make clear what what they're doing, interacting together. And then also to provide you with the actual text of the reports that we've that the that staff has drafted. Those need to be when they go to the state when when the LDRs are approved. So this is something that you can still update at this point. So the first thing is the three categories, the clearest categories to me were transportation. We had two of the of the 10 LDR amendments that were very transportation focused. And as I mentioned the other time, there are so many ways to slice these things and they all sort of intertwine with each other, depending on what rabbit hole you want to go down. So this is just how things made sense primarily to me. Transportation is fairly standalone and then the Act 47 compliance stuff is primarily in that two, no, three, four, five, eight and nine. Some of those are very directly in response to S100 Act 47. You know, the state says you must do this and so we did that, things about. Anyway, so but also we took that opportunity to to be more thoughtful and intentional about the changes instead of just rote least following what the state said we had to do and went kind of above those minimum requirements to make it make sense for South Burlington. So those, the first three, three, four and five are the low, medium and higher scale consolidated zoning districts. Eight is all of the amendments that are related to the conservation PUD and the transferable development rights. Because those both have implications for density shifting or not, or conservation on one end or the other. So they're they're intertwined. And then separately, but still related to that is inclusionary zoning updates. The maximums are set as a combination of TDRs and inclusionary, but we updated the the city's inclusionary standards to mesh well with the state's system. So that's partially why it ended up being still under that that Home Act, Act 47 compliance bucket. And then the last pile is more or less things that we ran ran across in the process of doing the other things. So the opportunity arose when you're working through a lot of the other amendments and changes to to think through some of our our structural things, our process things, submission requirements and making that all makes sense. It didn't, it wasn't, it didn't feel like a good plan to be updating substance without taking the opportunity to also update process at the same time. So and and clean out things that are that were really duplicates. So six is that reorganization of Article 15, which includes subdivision PUD and master plan. It still remains subdivision PUD and master plan as A, B and C in 15. But some of the standards are moved around a little bit. Master plan, I think of master plan as having been right sized, that it it truly applies now to properties that should have more long range planning. When before the it was catching some things that it didn't quite make sense to be going through that additional layer of process. And then seven is there were a handful of similar commercial uses and a few districts that were sort of so similar to not be necessary to be different. And that sprung out from the consolidation work in three, four and five, you know, when we're looking at consolidating districts, you're looking pretty closely at the zoning at the table of uses and realizing, you know, that is not necessary because we have this other category, things like that. And then number 10 is minor and technical amendments. It's a bit of a catchall for all those little tiny changes that are, you know, there's everything from grammar and punctuation through very minimal changes that support the other amendments in in the pile. So that's the proposed 10 and the cluster, the three sort of major. It's really the three stories to tell. It's it's sort of a transportation, like revamping our transportation system to make it more to make progress on the climate action plan and to have more of a multi multimodal emphasis on our impact fees and transportation permitting systems. And then the second bucket is all of the things that we've been doing comprehensively to both comply with the state law and also take the opportunity to support our neighborhoods to thrive into the future. And then the last bucket is is a lot of a lot of cleanup and a lot of streamlining and a lot of working towards better transparency in our regulations. So then I provided the, so we provided the state form for each of those 10. There are some things that repeat or close to repeat. A lot of, I mean, most of the checkboxes are the same because it's, you know, does the city have a capital improvement plan? Yes, and it's the same for all of them. But there's and there are some that are similar, so like three, four and five have some similar language in the reports because it's three sort of development scales with with somewhat similar purposes. So some of those, some of that language was was repeated through those. So we wanted to, the the planning commission has to approve the reports and this is the opportunity, especially because of how wide reaching these amendments are and how they kind of reach their tentacles everywhere. If this is we would love any feedback from the commission on whether how the amendments are framed in the reports is how you understand them and how you would like them to be framed, both to the state and to the public. Importantly, in the future, if someone in 10 years says, well, why the heck did the planning commission do whatever? This report is is kind of the documentation of the legislative history of of why certain changes were made. They will have, you know, you'll have minutes and recordings and other things, but this is the big summary document. So making sure that each of those 10 are providing the right, the right message and the right intention.
Statutorily, they're also the statement of how the each of the bylaw draft bylaws are consistent with the city plan and with state statutes. So they are a mandatory component of this that connects it all together. And it also goes to all the neighboring communities as well as the state, so.
Yeah, I thought the explanations of why were easy to understand, clear.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I saw with him was, I don't know if you printed it, but when you were reading him, it's you have to expand those little sections.
Yeah, there's no way around that, unfortunately. I tried to figure out a way to make the PDF expand its box before you could print it or something or how or save it a certain way. And it's, that's just the way that they set up their form.
So if you if you print the form.
It it'll cut it off.
It cuts it off. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just, it 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 just seems strange reading through them that, you know, the format being the same format for all of them doesn't actually have a title for it.
We tried to sneak a title in.
Figure out what's this one about?
Yeah.
That seemed to be kind of a
Yeah, we I know.
And we could have in theory done one report, but to try to cover all these different topics in one report would just make it, you know, your printing problem becomes a lot worse. We will provide the feedback to the makers of the
Yes.
Maybe we just did too much work.
All at once. Yeah. So we we tried with the title, to Donna's point, to put a sort of short phrase title at the beginning of the first box that we had.
It took up space, though.
But it pushed things down, but it's, it was, we had ran into the same problem. It was like, which one is number six? Which one is whatever? So heard.
So there is a proposed motion in here, and I know Michael had some some items as well, but there's a proposed motion in your packet that I'll pull up for you so that you can have a discussion if you'd like.
Well, are there any other changes that we need to?
Michael, we can make a motion and then discuss it.
All right.
Move to approve the planning commission reports on land development regulation amendments. 2024, oh, one, oh, two, oh, three, oh, four, oh, five, oh, six, oh, seven, oh, eight, oh, nine, and 10 as are set for public hearing on July 30th, 2024.
Seconded.
Michael seconded.
Do we discuss? Okay.
Yeah, now we can discuss. It's on my table.
I've had a couple of thoughts. Helen suggested last time that maybe it be color coordinated. I'm just thinking of ways that it could be easier for the public. You know, it's kind of a bear, really, you know, so.
So that's a very good point. We this, so there's two things happening at the same time. The report is in the state form going to the state. It has the detail of of answering these specific questions about state compliance and everything else. We are in parallel working on a series of documents that we're calling the spotlight documents. If you're around a few years ago, there was a series of these with after interim zoning about different subsections. So there's a different version that we've been working on and I'm not on the Zoom, but can you pull up the one of them?
So it's it's start, it is basically the same information, but packaged in more plain English and a lot more user friendly. So I'll the draft ones, if you'd like to see them.
Without all the boilerplate?
Without all.
Without all the boilerplate, without the checkboxes, without the repeated things for the most part.
As you were explaining to us what the sections are, I wondered if it would be helpful to say pretty much the same thing as a just explanation of the sections. There would just sum things up for the public.
We we used those spotlights the last time around when we met with the public. And they were very helpful.
Yeah.
So this is a sample of what that would look like. So it's transportation, spotlight and transportation demand management and just a little quick overview and then trying to be in a little more plain English. What is the purpose? What is it doing? What's the, what's the level of service? Where can I find these things? Trying to make it a little more these things are not conversational, but a little bit easier to access. And then depending on which one it is, there'll be some either maps or or tables or something that sort of gets to the heart of the information quickly.
Right. So like, for example, the low scale neighborhood consolidated zoning district in our draft that we're working on for this, I've included the lot size and lot coverage table, just a small sort of snippet of it. And if you remember a few months ago, the sort of hypothetical lots with if you had a house and a deck, you could put your driveway like this if you're, if it was 5,000 square feet or seven or whatever it was, a couple of those kind of box sketches put into to those kinds of documents. So it's both the information and also, you know, things that we have already to make them a little more understandable. And also putting a little bit more information about like how many homes does this, how many lots does this affect? Like if, you know, there are current, there are 34 lots that are under 5,000 square feet in South Burlington in the low scale neighborhood area. There are, I'm making up the 34 is correct, but the next number maybe there's, you know, 150 that are between five and six or whatever it is. We're putting in a little more context so that people can can see how it actually would affect them.
What 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 might also be helpful to the public if when you identify a 5,000 square lot, I don't have a picture in my mind, but if you could say, well, that's a a typical Mayfair Park
Yep.
lot, I think, or whatever it is.
Yep.
I think that might be helpful
Yeah, so
as well. So people have a
Right.
picture in their minds.
So Helen, I think it was before you, maybe before you joined the commission that we were, we looked at, we have a series that we've maps that show the size lots in the different areas of the city. This is, it looks more or less like like this. And yeah, so it's it's zoomed way out, but on on this map, for example, the green is between 10 and 15,000 square feet, I think. Now I'm now I'm losing the thread where I am. I think that's right. And then the the yellow, which is hard to see on this, is between 5 and 10,000 square feet. So anything, any of those lots in yellow, which are hard to see on the screen, actually, would not be able to be subdivided with the new minimum lot size. The greens would theoretically be able to be subdivided theoretically, because it doesn't take into account any wetlands, environmental protection, the location of existing buildings, the shape of the lot. So we do have that. And if you you look citywide, you can, you can see like generally the lots in East Woods are smaller or the lots in the core of Orchards are smaller and the lots on the sort of outside ring of Orchards are larger. Butler Farm is generally larger lots than Chamberlain is. So you can see those colors on that sort of citywide scale. Yeah. So like Orchards is here on the left, that core is sort of the beige colored lots. That's smaller core and then the outside ring and then Brewer Parkway are are bigger lots. So we do have some of that information to include in these spotlights as well.
I think that would be really helpful.
We'll work on the colors.
Purple or something.
I know, fuchsia, something. Yeah. So you can, you can tell from these maps like how many approximately, you know, it'll it changes things more in certain areas than others.
Number, but also gives you a visual, visual
Yep.
if you're familiar with that neighborhood.
Yep, exactly, exactly. Any other?
Michael, I think you had a few. If you wanted me to bring, if you wanted to go through them, you're welcome to. That's what you want. It's not what I want. I'm happy to do whatever you'd like.
Yeah, well, then everybody can see them. I think it'll go quickly.
So Michael had a few. Do you want to walk through them, Michael?
Yeah. The first one is that we use in one place electric cars. And I think it's more than cars, so we should probably use vehicles.
Okay.
Electric vehicles. And that was on page eight, page nine. This bylaw is anticipated to have an incremental increase in the upfront cost of development. I thought it would be maybe cleaner to say this by bylaw is anticipated to incrementally increase the upfront cost of development. It's pure grammatical preferences, not there's a sentence that reads after components of these three sub.
I read that. I was looking, I looked at it again when I've been working on the spotlights and I saw that and I was like, nope.
I couldn't figure out there was something missing at the end.
After is not is not required. And then I, that's, that's right. If you just cut the word after, then then it works.
Components, okay. So components of these three sub articles were added to the other. Okay, got it.
It's not the best sentence that's ever been written, but it
makes sense.
It actually is a sentence if you take after out. I did, I saw that. I said, oh, Michael's gonna find that.
Oh, page 65. We've got, we use current future, which are kind of contradictory. So I said maybe better to say instead it complies with the future land use policy of the area, or if that's not good enough, instead it complies with city plan 2024 future land use policy for the area. I don't have a preference.
I think any of that is fine. It's, it's a hard one when it's the, what the city is planning for future land use as of today
Yep.
is is a hard, is a hard phrase to write, but that that makes, the second one, I think is better. It's clearer.
And 72 is a minor, it's just instead of will be required to making, it just be will be required to make 10%. And then in the minutes.
We'll get to those after.
We'll get to that. Do the minutes, but that's all I had. I thought the whole thing was pretty damn good.
I did too. Thank you.
At first I thought, oh, I'm gonna read ninety pages.
Then you thought, that's so much less than all the other meetings.
I know, yeah. Unless you hit the wrong button and the thing collapse, you collapse and you.
Thing there was a real pain.
Yeah, I had to figure it out and do it.
Expand and contract.
So procedurally, Helen and Michael, would you be, would those be friendly amendments to the motion to?
They would be.
Report?
Yes.
Do we need to voice that?
You just did, that's why I posed the question.
Any other thoughts or comments on anything? Generally, the structure makes sense, the purpose is consistent with your understanding of the purpose and intent of. What we've been, what we've been working on for however many months at this point.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of Helen's emotion, seconded by Michael.
Oh, no, Donna.
All right, five zero.
Yeah, I.
Okay.
I just, I just had a question. Because we were talking about the public meetings, which I think that discussion's coming up.
Yeah.
Is it the intent to discuss, discuss all nine in each meeting or divide them up so there is some?
Yes.
Special topics on certain meetings and not all of them.
So I think in this, in this case, so last year with the city plan, we did go by topic in certain meetings and we went kind of open ended in in others. I think we're at the point where this is open ended and it's more based on when people are available to attend certain things. That's why the intention is to have a few different days and times, not just a bunch of seven o'clock weekdays or something. So my recommendation, and this would be up to the commission's direction, would be to. Leave it open for the public, you know, whatever someone wants to to raise or discuss in in whatever meeting they can attend. To have that, to have that open and I, my thought was that it was. Maybe more like what what Paul Angle said, a very brief overview of the ten things, like here are the ten big, like the highlights. Of what what's happening with the purposes of those ten sort of clusters. And then open it up for for comments, questions, et cetera, from from anyone who's attending.
Yeah, I mean, you could always ask the attendees, which of these ten are you, are you most interested in?
Right.
And doesn't have to follow.
Exactly.
Would that be it? Say there happens to be a a person with a lot of property in in the city that's trying to develop it. And if they wanted to learn more about the changes to the LDRs. Would that?
Have to read it, right.
They have to read it, but we, I mean.
With staff is absolutely available, if if folks want to learn more about it, we are, our door is always open. We'd love to have meetings with whomever would like to have a deep dive into it.
By appointment.
Show up at four thirty in the afternoon. So this is the right, the appropriate stage to to have those meetings then.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep.
No, there were developers last time around, actually, I think it was only Frank Von Turkovich was the only guy who.
Might have been, might have been from the sort of greater development community, yeah. Great.
All right.
Okay, so.
Takes care of a big guy in the meeting.
More than upward. So the updates were. The H two eighty seven legislation, correct?
That is what is up here, so I've got a very text heavy slideshow, I'm not going to speak to every slide in detail. The intent was that I give you a little overview and then share this with you and the public. This is a little summary of a very large act, some of which is directly related to what you're doing right now. With the zoning amendments and some of which is sort of a preview of coming attractions. So as you likely heard, the legislature did a lot of work in what is called the B Home Act this year. It's a follow on to the Home Act of last year. It was vetoed by the governor and then it was amongst the six overrides that took place last week, so it is law now. And it took effect immediately, so. Here we go again, but the good news is that you're gonna see here in terms of action items for the commission. Virtually everything that has to do with local zoning, but for one or two things, you've already accounted for in your work. So there, it is not sort of a huge new work for you all. So I'm just gonna go through these because it'll give the picture of what this is doing overall. So there are statewide planning goals.
I had a question because in going through the 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 forms. In some cases, we are, we're already in compliance with the Home Act and I saw one or two where we're in compliance with the B Home Act.
Yes, thank you to Kelsey, she was, we've been watching the legislation throughout the. So I'm gonna, as we go through, I'll flag areas where we have still some compliance to do. But largely speaking, your choice is to be a little bit above the the minimums. Set yourselves up so that you were already complying with the B Home Act. So at the very highest level, there are about eighteen or nineteen statewide planning goals. They apply to all local plans, all regional plans, all statewide plans. And so as you're putting together the city plan, this is in the background of all of it. There are some updates to this, most specifically, you'll see in bold there, they more precisely talk about. Intensive residential development should be encouraged primarily in downtown centers, village centers, planned growth areas, village areas. These are terms that you're gonna see show up a little later, but trying to be more precise about what that means. They talk about being planned to accommodate a substantial majority of the housing needs. And later on, you see sort of similar words being used in terms of public investments. Should be, should reinforce the planned growth patterns, not just the general character and.
Do, do we expect to get the the housing targets from the CCRPC?
Coming up. I got more slides, we'll get there shortly, so I'm just speaking about the goals first. Additionally, there is, so it speaks about. Is a. A goal to have safe and affordable housing and to have housing that meets the needs of various income groups. Consistent with the housing targets, which I'll speak about in a few, in a, in a minute, this is again just at the goal level. There's a new goal that's been added, which is to equitably distribute environmental benefits and burdens. As described in in Title Three. And so your action will be, the next iteration of the city plan will have to incorporate these.
So what do they?
City plan, I mean, in eight years' time.
Yes, but i- if you were the adjacent community, it might be two weeks from now. Because we just happened to just adopted ours, but communities are on different sites, so.
What exactly do they mean by distribute environmental benefits? Does that mean have parks, oops, all over? And then, I'm not sure how you distribute burdens. Like if you have a.
So, so hypothetically.
Plane is there, right?
Yeah, but hi- hypothetically, if you were looking for a site for a new public works garage. You know, you, you might want to consider that sort of distribution of of burden or or things like that. So environmental can mean both sort of, what we think of as sort of ecological environmental. But also sort of sound and and noise and smoke and and things like that, like public health kind of environmental.
Like the airport.
Like the airport, like public works garages, like other facilities.
Like the sewage treatment plants.
Sewage treatment plants, water treatment.
Well, remember, this is for local, regional and statewide, so it may be.
Where's the next?
Coventry landfill, it might be.
Coventry.
May, maybe a benefit is you're able to walk to a park and a burden is that you have to take public transit or drive.
And this is not something that we've done a deep dive into yet, but there are, there actually.
So would that potentially not allow like a business district? A manufacturing districts, because that would be a.
So this is how, it's actually statutorily defined what these things are, so this is the actual reference here. So burdens mean significant impact, examples of burden include climate change impacts, air and water pollution. Improper sewer sewage disposal. Uh, access, limit access to nutritious food, so in some parts of the country, there's a term called food deserts where there are no grocery stores near folks. And so it may be as simple as in some communities, making sure that there is the ability to have a. Grocery store and maybe that is their big community development plan is to figure out, how do we get a convenience store that is not a twenty mile drive?
Right, we've, we've discussed at various points in the planning commission, things like reinvesting in municipal water and sewer infrastructure. Like the pipes or something, instead of just, oh, the new neighborhood gets new pipes because they need new pipes. Also thinking about replacement of of old pipes in old neighborhoods or that sort of, that sort of thing. Not only, not just the newest places get the best stuff.
I wonder if that applies to roadways too, you know, upgrading, upgrading, I mean, bringing, bringing them up to. You know, standard for all users in places where roads are, tend to be very. Focused only on automobiles and trucks.
Yeah, I think that's not necessarily in the statutory definition of environmental stuff, but I, I think that is in the same vein. Of of equity and equitable distribution of benefits and burdens.
Are you okay with a question?
Sure.
Thank you, Paul, staff would. When it comes to like environmental burdens, would things like exposure to invasive species relate? Something I've noticed lately is like, I, my neighborhood's close to the highway and the highway is a very good carrier for pioneering species, including invasives. And so. I'm constantly like fighting invasives in my neighborhood and my, my yard and in neighbors' yards. Whereas you might not get those tree of heavens if you're like way out in a way. And so is there something in here that would indicate? More help with that, or is that beyond the scope of this type of legislation?
I think, you know, just to answer broadly, I guess I'd say this is a new planning goal. And it's for, within the statutory definitions, it's for us to assess, what does it mean to equitably, equitably distribute it? So I think that is left to the community in the next iteration of the plan to work on that. So, yeah. So moving to the next level of specificity here. So housing targets, Michael, you just mentioned this, so this is a quick callback to last year's legislation. So regional plans as of a year ago. Need to include a housing need assessment essentially that is provided by the state. Vermont Housing Finance, and she is putting together. To. That is disaggregated by municipality and then it'll, it'll have a set of recommendations. So the regional planning commissions are expected to be getting it this fall. For inclusion in their plans and then this year, the legislation said. A plan for municipality, first of all, it said last year shall be consistent, but this year, the new additions are. The housing element of municipal plans shall include the targets provided by the regional planning commission. Shall use data on year round seasonal dwellings to make assessments. So this is connecting these puzzle pieces together of, there will be essentially a target provided for each municipality. That then becomes the responsibility of the. The town or city to incorporate those in the next iteration of their plan. So, yeah, so again, the planning commission action will be in the next iteration of the plan to incorporate targets as they're developed. Okay, now we're getting to the zoning stuff, I'm sorry for the small font here, but importantly, you've covered most of this. So this is the statutes on housing, the text at the top here speaks about. It clarifies the language that. Every, anywhere that a single unit dwelling, a single family home is allowed in the state, that a duplex is allowed on the same density. Not right now, unfortunately, that is down, that's why we spun it around, but our IT is working on it. And I will share this, Michael, so that everybody can read it at their leisure. So this clarifies that wherever a single family home is allowed in the state, that a duplex is allowed under the same circumstances. The significant change in here that is not exactly the way that you have written the. Oops, excuse me, written the, oh, we're going the wrong way. The draft bylaw is that in the B Home Act now, it says. That in any district that is served by municipal water and sewer that allows residential development. Multi-unit dwellings with four or fewer units shall be a permitted u- permitted use on the same size lot as a single unit dwelling. So you in your draft had proposed that single and two family dwellings be on a five thousand square foot lot. And three and fours be on a seven thousand square foot lot. Under the legislation, you will need to make those the same number. You could choose five thousand, you could choose six thousand, but they will need to be the same number. That's the most significant change that we identified. And at your next meeting, I think would be our, hope that you'd have a little bit of a discussion around this. To be prepared for following the public hearing, what you want to do. You would not take formal action until after the public hearing, but you can have a discussion tonight. I really just wanted to lay the, lay the groundwork. Donna.
Well, just considering the groundwork, does this presume potentially increases in building height? To, to, you know, create that, because I mean, to increase the density on a site, you know, and, and. The interesting thing is, three and four unit buildings require design by architects. You know, and and they do follow under the commercial, well, I don't know if if three unit do, but four unit do. And. And it, it kind of, kind of follows that. Perhaps, perhaps the higher density requirements would require higher building heights.
The lot is small.
It is.
If the lot is small, you don't necessarily need a bigger lot if you can.
It is not a requirement of the legislation. However, the intent of the legislation certainly is to facilitate their existence. So I think that's something for you all to wrestle with, anything you.
Yeah, so, so I just would add, this is, this is actually not density exactly, it's dimensional standards. So you just have, you have to allow something to be on the same dimensional standards. So if you decided that three and fours can be on on five thousand square feet, the way that you're allowing singles and duplexes. That just means you have to, it has to be allowed, it doesn't say necessarily that, like. Setting a low minimum doesn't then put the burden on the city to make that completely possible on every lot in the city. Because there are three and four plexes in the city that are, that are two floors, the same as a single family home. That are, you know, would fit the dimensional requirements of a single family home, there just happen to be smaller units than than this, than maybe a larger one. So this is just setting minimums.
Instead of two, three thousand square foot units or twenty five hundred square foot units, you could have four twelve hundred.
Right, so you know, the Habitat building around the corner here is a good example, it's a fourplex that is. Approximately the size of a, you know, medium to medium large single family unit. It doesn't mean that you are promising twenty five hundred square feet per unit in a fourplex. It just says that you have to allow in the same.
It's also not, the state requirement is also not promising that you would be able to fit. The fourplex that you want to design on any five thousand square foot lot, it's just dropping the floor. So that it is more flexible in case your lot is a certain size or your access is a certain way or whatever it is that makes it possible. Not every size of single family home would fit on a five thousand square foot lot with our building and lot coverages. You know, you can't, with the, with the sketches I was just re- relooking at today, you know, you couldn't fit a four thousand square foot. You know, two floor home with a two car garage and a driveway and a deck inside the minimum lots. Or at five thousand square feet and also meeting building coverage and lot coverage, it's just not possible. And that's not, it doesn't mean the city has to make it possible, it's just dropping those requirements. So then it becomes possible in some situations.
It's allowable.
It's allowable.
Five thousand square feet is an eighth of an acre up here, that's a very common lot size around here.
Yeah.
So, one thing, I, I think when we talked about these. Where we settled on the five thousand square foot lot, we, we were looking at how many nonconforming lots. And what does it, what happens if you have not, a nonconforming lot, say you went to six thousand? What, what does? What, what does that mean if you have a lot of non-conforming ones?
It's, it doesn't do a lot for existing properties, like for example, if you decided it's gonna notwithstanding state law, if you said, well, guess what? The minimum lot size is three acres. It doesn't do anything to all the homes that are on much smaller lots. It, and you would still have the ability to build a home on a, on a small lot under state law. It, it can affect a little bit, the, it can have some small effects, but not, not a ton on, on sort of the policy side of things. You know, you don't really want to be, unless you're intentionally pushing lot sizes in a certain direction, you don't want to be having too many non-conforming, non-conformities without a real intention behind it. The intention of, of, you know, of a zoning regulation that makes a bunch of things non-conforming is that over time, those things will go away. That's sort of the, a principle of zoning is you're zoning for what you want in the future, which implies that over time, you, you want those small homes on small lots to go away, which is not the case in the city's policy.
So I won't be here next time. I would like to be a part of the discussion. I was, I don't know, skeptical about our reducing the lot size to five thousand minimum. And so I would be in favor of us going back to seven thousand square feet lots for minimum for all of them. I'm sorry. I know, I'm sorry. I said that I won't be here next time, participate in the discussion. But I am in favor of going back to seven thousand square feet. I was a little reluctant to go down to five thousand, you know, we were kind of enthusiastically reducing lot sizes at the time, and I don't know that it was a great idea, so.
Thank you, Paul. I, I see where Paul's coming from and, and that was, was my initial feeling as well when I looked at this. Because I thought you guys did a really good job of parsing out those two distinctions. But there's a little bit more, sorry. It's like bending over and kneeling, right? There's a little more nuance that I want to suggest that you guys consider. One is that housing is a priority consumption of land and automobiles are not. And so one of the things I've noticed between living in different places, just in Vermont or in Montreal or Philly, is that automobiles can take up a lot of space. And in a neighborhood like Paul's, the roads aren't very wide. They were built before the federal government insisted on wide roads. My road, just shortly after yours, very wide, twenty four feet for no reason, right? People can drive fast.
We actually, we were active in supporting a smaller road width for Proctor Avenue. So that's, that was a neighborhood insistence that that happened.
And I think that's really good. And one of the things I would suggest is actually evaluating lot coverage, and I know this is Vanguard, evaluate lot coverage not as every bit of coverage is equal. But coverage for a home and living be different and lower than the rating for a driveway and a garage without living space above it. So automobiles, which have a lot of negative externalities for the environment and for space in the rest of the city, that that space devoted to them be counted differently. And when you're looking at, how do we, you know, you're saying, like what Kelsey's saying is we don't have to make it possible for a fourplex to fit on the lot your home is on, and yours is what, seven?
A little over seven.
Yeah, very small. I, I cannot imagine a fourplex there. But also considering both the driveway and vehicle space and thinking, making that be a, a higher mark to meet, because that does affect how many people can live there unless you're really close to transit and have an effective transit using community. And I think I, I know that's more complicated for staff. I know that's more complicated for all of you. But since the state has, has created these, I like evolutionary biology, right? When you, when there is, is a, a limit on what can be done, there is more competition to figure out what is the best possibility. And rather than using this opportunity to make something the simplest we can get by with, I would rather like to think about this as the most innovative thing we can do. And I know that that is more effort, but I really, I truly think that there's a value in looking at impermeable surface for vehicles at a higher weight than residences that house humans.
When you say higher rate, what do you mean? Carries more weight or?
Yeah, so like a, a scale. So let's say you had a property and you would look at the amount of space that is for humans. Like the lived in space, the house, and that would be one square foot is equal to one square foot. But you might look at the space for cars or vehicles, Michael, vehicles and say that's maybe has a scale of one point five or one point two or two point seven. I don't know what that number is. That would be the suggestion for discussion. But so when you look at that, you would say, oh, if there's a, I don't know, a, a garage without anyone living above it, right? Like it's a detached garage. Or there's a long paved driveway that those things would count for a greater amount of impervious surface because it's not priority impervious surface. Right? It's like, it, it's trying to scale that to like humans matter. And when we have neighborhoods like mine or Paul's, where we're, we're actually, we live close to grocery stores, for example, right? But cars are still almost required for everything else, right? But if we're looking towards getting younger people, people who aren't using cars but are using electric scooters or electric bikes and fitting them in and getting them to be taxpayers and employees. Am I doing something wrong with the? I'm just kicking it too much. I will try not to.
Brian, I have a question for you about that.
Sure.
Because we've sort of been talking in lot coverage versus building coverage. And so you're, you're breaking down building coverage into human space versus car storage space? Because I'm thinking that lot you have a different value for required, you know, required car storage or something, you know, because I, I think the, the lot coverage kind of, I think once you start getting four units, perhaps it starts to get higher. Then, you know, the building coverage would be the same. And, you know, unless you're talking differently about it in garage. But I always figured enclosed garage could also be a living space because they often become that in the future, so.
If, if they become that, like if, like there's a, an attached garage in the apartment house I live in, I would love to buy the house and convert the garage to living space, but I can't. And obviously I would have to get a permit to do so, right? But I think where you set that difference is you know, completely up to you if you even want to entertain this idea. Is it simply non-human space like a tennis court? Or is it simply automobile space that has no other function? So a separate garage versus a garage with dwelling above it, driveway. You know, so that is a suggestion that I have for you guys to think about in a really critical way. But I would also include street parking space. Because I, I don't think that's touched upon in this, but for example, I had a an ex who lived in the north end of Burlington. And every fall, the students would come in, they would park on the street and they would not park very close. So I might spend fifteen minutes looking for a parking space and then walk a half mile. Right? But after a couple of weeks, they got to understand the neighborhood, they would park closer together. They would fit more cars in less space. And that's if the street is wide enough to have cars parked on the street. Burlington already is pretty sure about what side of the street you park on. South Burlington hasn't gotten that detailed. Like I see no parking signs in very bad places in my neighborhood. It's almost the opposite of what is safe for pedestrians. It's like cars are parked only on the concave curves. And so there's extra going around, right? Where there's like sidewalk crossings and stuff. It's very precarious. But if you have, like Paul's neighborhood, you have lots of properties that are seven thousand feet and less. And if you scale up the automobile space and you do put some kind of limit on, you can do this if you can fit a, a literal minimum amount of vehicles on the lot and in the front line of that property, if there's width on the street. It's, I don't want to move back towards parking minimums, but I want to be very selective about in this case that if you put a multiple multiplier factor on auto centric spaces, that you also think about the street in front so that it doesn't become a one house is a fourplex and now there's cars all down the street. Because that has a negative externality from the vehicles as well, even though we want density. We're trying to make a trade off.
You, in a sense, you're differentiating between the impervious surfaces of a home versus the impervious surfaces of a driveway. And, and therefore you, you wanted to incentivize one. But the only way I could think of to have a homeowner pay more for the asphalt driveway is a, a factor that you suggest that's added to his, the, the, the person's stormwater charge. That's how it's measured. Stormwater is measured based on, well, not everywhere. There's some standards for single family homes, but in my case, it's the whole, the whole development divided by the number of, of units.
Right, yeah.
I'm not quite sure how you could, other than including that, I don't see how hard it could be organized.
If I make up a number and say your lot can have eighty percent coverage, and if all of that was home, you could cover eighty percent of your lot with home. However, you also want to have space for your vehicle, but your vehicle space is hypothetically rated at a scale of two to one. And therefore, that means you could have sixty percent of your lot be your home and ten percent be your vehicle space. But that would effectively be twenty percent of your vehicle space and fill that eighty percent. I know that makes things more complicated for staff, but it's not super complicated. It prioritizes people, just like our municipal plan is like trying to talk about people. And it deprioritizes cars. And in certain neighborhoods like Paul's, I think that could be really beneficial at preventing overdevelopment. Question?
No question, no, I just want to cut it out.
That's fair.
I mean, it's discussion for next time or as we get into eight, six, eighty seven, you know, so.
It's something to marinate on anyway. And if that was confusing, shoot me an email. I'll try to meet up with you guys and explain it more.
But I did because I, you know, I'm not going to be here next time and I have some thoughts about the seven thousand square feet.
Paul, can I make a quick comment on that? You can take that driveway space, put a basket up and have kids shooting baskets in that driveway three hours a day and it becomes living space. You want to make it real complicated.
All right, if, if, if you'll allow me to keep, keep rolling here. Okay, so I'm going to try to sort of go through the next ones fairly quickly. There is a new requirement, no zoning or subdivision bylaw shall have the effect of prohibiting unrelated occupants from residing in the same dwelling unit. We already meet the standard in South Burlington, though our definitions are dated. So it is not a to be done now, but we are recommending that over the next year, you take a look at this for the spirit of it, though we're meeting certainly the letter of it.
We allow them, but we have a, a minimum or a set number.
Yeah, it's sort of a dated standard. It's, it's without getting into more discussion. There's some other pieces that don't involve zoning changes, but I thought that it would be important for you as the planning commission to know. This will be important for the DRB as well. There are certain uses and, and activities for which municipal bylaw, for which a DRB is restricted to only looking at the things, oops, I'm sorry. You're looking at a different slide than me. That, that a municipality can only regulate according to those things, location, height, size, bulk, yards, courts, setbacks, et cetera. So there's a list of, of activities like educational facilities, correctional facilities. Last year, emergency shelters were added and this year, hotels and motels converted to permanently affordable housing developments. So that is, you know, part of the prioritization, no legislative action needed, but they undergo a limited review. So for example, architectural standards is not in that list. So we wouldn't be able to have, apply architectural standards to a conversion. This you've already addressed in the draft regulations that you have. Kelsey already had thought about these, but there are limitations on the size of parking spaces, nine by eighteen feet is, is what a municipality may allow. And existing non-conforming parking spaces count as parking spaces, even if they're smaller. And somebody may meet their parking requirement by being on an adjacent lot. So it's already all in your draft and or already in the regulations, but just wanted you to know. This again is not something you need to change in your regulations because this is things that are exempt from local zoning. But there are added, added elements of on-farm businesses. So on-farm businesses are considered part of the farm. There are expansions as to what is considered an on-farm business, notably that the revenues from the on-farm business, accessory on-farm business may now exceed the revenues of the farming operation. Whereas before it was limited at, at fifty percent. Also, you can sell things related to the farm. I, when I read this, I see stickers and hats, things like that. Promotion of products that name, describe or promote the farm, merchandise apparel. And also they must come from a farm, but not necessarily that farm. So you could have a farm sedan that is selling from other farms products. Like this is a reflection of the changing face of agriculture in Vermont, just FYI. A couple of procedural things, we, we meet this by a long shot already, but DRBs must now open their, or warn their public hearing no later than a hundred and twenty days after they receive an application. We're typically much closer to about thirty to forty days, so nowhere near that. And there is one change to who can appeal decisions of the administrative officer or of the DRB, which is that one of the groups is, was previously any ten persons in the municipality who, who, for, for which they, they allege that there's a, an issue, it's now twenty. Okay, done with the local stuff, now on Act two fifty. There are a lot of dates in here, but there are some temporary exemptions from Act two fifty that are in place now. So conversions of hotels or motels to permanently affordable housing is exempt from Act two fifty. Priority housing projects, which were already exempt in our city center, but now are a half mile outside, are exempt. A priority housing project is one that meets a certain minimum. are exempt, a priority housing project is one that meets a certain minimum amount of affordable housing as defined by the state. So it includes our whole city center and goes essentially all the way over to Mills Avenue along Liliston Road. So conceivably, you know, an area like the Ethan Allen Hotel Motel, that could either be a conversion or it could be a redevelopment if it was for priority housing, it would not be subject to Act Two Fifty.
Does our inclusionary zoning meet that standard of what you just said about the inclusion, the priority housing?
Basically, so there's a priority housing project and there's affordable housing development. And the two words are a little interchangeable to me. Our inclusionary zoning is meant to line up with the term affordable housing development, which gets used a lot in statute.
Versus priority.
Priority housing, I think, is a slightly different category that has funding tied to it in some way. But we did line it up with where most of the statutory language is, and you'll see it in a minute, I think, on that.
Thank you.
So projects of seventy-five or fewer housing units in neighborhood development areas are exempt from Act Two Fifty until twenty twenty-seven, so that's in city center. Projects of fifty or fewer housing units in urbanized areas of over fifty thousand people and within a quarter mile are also exempt from Act Two Fifty. So that's really essentially Shelburne Road corridor. So we are defined as an urbanized area under the census. There's more than fifty thousand people in the urbanized area, which includes Burlington, South Burlington and other places. So therefore, it would be, they are exempt until twenty twenty-seven. And then, as you see, conversion of commercial development of twenty-nine or fewer housing units and accessory dwelling units. So this is temporary actions done by the legislature. Now we jump into the more permanent actions. I know I'm hitting you with a lot, and there's a lot in the statute, but regional plans, I have to back up to explain the next section. Regional plan, future land use maps are going to be made consistent statewide. So right now, each of the different regional planning commissions come up with their own methodology of how they want to have their future land use map, which then informs ours. Moving forward, they will need to fit into these ten categories. And each of these are defined in statute as to what they are to make for consistency statewide. And then what you're going to see in a minute is that certain Act Two Fifty and designation programs connect directly into this. So you're eligible for, at the local level, for let's say a designated center if you are designated in the regional plan as a downtown, new town center or planned growth area. And you've probably heard at the Act Two Fifty end about the tiers. Tier one being exempt from Act Two Fifty, tier three having more jurisdiction, that's going to connect into this as well. So there are, they describe it as being four tiers of Act Two Fifty, it's three of them, it's technically four. So there's a full eligibility that's going to be developed by a new group called the Land Use Regulatory Board. That's going to, that group is responsible for the Act Two Fifty district commissions. It's a, it'll be permanent, full-time, five-member board. They will sort of develop the process for all of this. But there are tier one, that are split into tier one and tier two, tier one A and tier one B that are your downtown areas. I'm not going to go into all the details in this, but basically different levels of not requiring Act Two Fifty in the future. Tier three, which is most likely going to be very rural areas in the state where there's the Act Two Fifty gets triggered at a lower level than currently. And then tier two is basically everything else in the state, which basically has the same Act Two Fifty, as has been the case previously, with one exception, which is something called the road rule, which is that if you are building a road of more than eight hundred feet in length for one or two lots and more than sixteen hundred feet or twelve hundred feet, something like that, for more, for four more lots, you are then subject to Act Two Fifty, the idea being to limit forest fragmentation. So that's the, that's the one change to tier two, it won't really apply likely in South Burlington, but just letting you know. Last slide, I think, also in the bill, is a complete revamp of our designation program. So there's villages, downtowns, new town centers, growth centers and neighborhood development areas. Now, they were all developed at their own timelines over twenty years and they don't really mesh with one another. This basically simplifies it down to two, two types, centers and neighborhoods. And the idea is that a center can have step one, step two, step three, it's the same geography. But it is scalable to the capacity or interests of the municipality. So if you're Hollitt, you may only want to be a step one for your village because there isn't a lot that, what you're trying to do with it. If you're South Burlington, you might be starting at a step two, which is where we are now, essentially new town center. And we may have goals, which we actually do in our plan, to become a more formalized downtown, and there are things that you need to do to achieve it, like having a downtown organization, an investment plan, et cetera, et cetera. And each step brings with it more and more statewide benefits. So it is incentivizing municipalities to go up the steps.
And benefits or access to money?
Access to. Yeah, so there's acts priority with grants, there's priority consideration for state office buildings. There's ability to set speed limits lower than twenty-five miles an hour, which municipalities are not authorized to do. There's, I don't remember the full list, but there's, there's there's caps on Act Two Fifty and wastewater fees that developers pay. So there's, there's sort of, it rises as you go up. Neighborhoods are adjacent to the centers and have the same benefits as, similar benefits to step two. There is no cap on the number of any of these that one has in a municipality. So a municipality could conceivably work towards having more than one center to it.
You could have a town center within a neighborhood development area.
Yes, so the neighborhood goes outside of the center. And you could imagine, over time, a South Burlington may choose to work towards having a second center somewhere on Shelburne Road. Many of our communities in the state have more than one already for, you know, for whatever quirk of history. You know, arguably Burlington has a couple of them, there's downtown and then there's North Street might be its own center. And then the New North End could be its own, its own center and sort of have its own goals for compact settlement. So that's it. There's a lot in this bill, there's a lot of work to do over the next couple, three years. But it seems to me to be very closely aligned with South Burlington's goals as well. So I think that this is really positive work that we can make use of these tools to achieve the same goals that the city has adopted. There you go. I will share this around with everybody.
Great, thank you.
What did the governor veto?
The governor indicated in his veto that there were some, he largely supported it, but there were some changes that he wanted to see. He didn't like the road rule that I described a minute ago, saying that having more than an eight hundred foot driveway triggered Act Two Fifty, he felt that that was too far. I don't remember all the other ones, but he felt also that there had been in prior iterations of the bill, some limitations on appeals of projects in downtowns that got taken out of the final version. He felt like if we're really going to see, you know, housing getting built in the areas that have been planned for it, then there should be more limitations on who and to what extent they can be appealed. Ultimately, the legislature did not agree, and so overwrote. Okay, so.
It's like we had a, we had a review with a legislative, well, person who works with AI Vermont today. And his take on the things that the governor wanted, he said basically the legislature would have gone along with them. It's just that there was no time to do it, you know, it was.
It was a one-day veto.
It was a long time to propose that, you know, if it had been proposed a month ago, they would have probably written those things into it and he could have agreed with it, but it was a timing problem.
Or politics.
That's what I got.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next thing. Next thing is scheduling outreach sessions for the LDR updates. It was indicated to me by the planning commission, you know, as early as three or four months ago that there's so much in these LDR amendments and it can affect a lot of different places in the city and a lot of different, you know, neighborhoods and areas and for all sorts of different subject areas that having additional, less formal public opportunity to ask questions or to comment or to learn more about them would be important. So as noted, the public hearing, the formal public hearing is on July thirtieth. That is a regular planning commission meeting that was rescheduled from the twenty-third because we had a handful of people missing on the twenty-third of July. So you have three, so let me back up for a second. The notice will be, the notice will be published in the other paper on July third instead of the fourth. It normally comes out on a Thursday, but it's the fourth. So that comes out on July third, so next Wednesday. And we are intending to have all of our public outreach information. So the clean draft of everything, the spotlight documents we were talking about, the language itself and the reports as drafted, all available to the public by the time that notice is published. So if someone sees it in the other paper and they go, hmm, that's interesting, they can go to the city website and it will be posted then. That said, that the end of that week, as I said, is public holiday and a lot of people are out of town in the summer, especially around that weekend. So there's effectively three weeks, the week of Monday, the eighth, the fifteenth and the twenty-second to have public listening sessions, for lack of a better term. Last year for the city plan, we had three. Two were on weekday, sort of midday kind of times, and one was on a Saturday, mid-morning. That seemed to work fairly well, considering that the public hearing is a weekday evening. So hoping to catch some different people by those different times. I didn't get a lot of feedback on what, when people were available in those three weeks. But, so I'd be, I'd be happy to hear if, if midday, like a lunchtime meeting during a weekday makes sense, first thing in the morning around, you know, not first thing, but nine o'clock is an option and the same on the weekends.
I'm going to be slightly more blunt and say, we need to schedule them so that we can get the ads out. So please tell us three days.
Three days, three times that are different from each other. You don't all have to be there, it would be great if two or three of you could be there on any, on each of the days. I've heard from Jessica that she is traveling a lot for work and for conferences and for personal things in July. So she can't really commit to being one of those core two or three people. She will try to attend when, if it is possible, but not considering her availability in this discussion.
Do you have any days that you would like to throw out as recommended days so that we can have a, like, get to a decision?
Right. So we have a planning commission meeting on Tuesday, the ninth. And then the end of that week, we actually have a consultant group coming into, to the city to talk about our equity, to work on our equity projects. So Wednesday, the tenth is a possible potential weekday. Or Saturday, the thirteenth.
Well, it's not really or, it's and, right? So I just want to get. How does the tenth look in lunchtime?
Looks good for me.
Just trying to, can, can.
It's all right. Or do we have, yes, I think we do have one, but that's okay.
I don't care the time.
That's an easy.
Okay, so.
When on the tenth?
Lunchtime?
Lunch, twelve to one.
Tenth.
Tenth is bad, so.
Somebody around you from the west coast.
Are you here on the thirteenth? I am not, on the Saturday.
Yeah, I got to run around on the tenth. But doesn't mean I can't do on the thirteenth.
I mean, you can answer.
We need people to come to a couple.
Oh, yes, yeah. How do we feel about Monday, the fifteenth? Or did we, or did we have two or three on Wednesday, the tenth?
Let's do the Saturday as well.
Yes, absolutely. So both Paul and I are unavailable on the thirteenth, so I was going to propose.
Works for me, again, I don't care what time.
Okay, so let's do Monday, the fifteenth at noon. How many people could make it on the tenth?
On the tenth?
Tenth, let's go, let's do that. I just want to get the sort of ball rolling on these after.
And you're saying potentially noon time?
We'll call it noon, yep. Twelve to one.
So how about Saturday, the twentieth?
Yep.
At maybe.
Ten AM?
Ten?
No.
I'm sorry, I was just putting in the other one, ten to ten to twelve, so.
So the tenth would be noon to one thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Noon to one thirty?
Yep.
All right.
And then what we were asking about is Saturday, July twentieth at ten AM. Michael said he would be available.
At what time?
Ten AM.
Yeah, I could, but you said the fifteenth.
Hour and a half.
We agreed on the fifteenth as well?
No.
Oh. So the tenth and the twentieth.
Yep.
And it doesn't have to be at ten, we're just, I mean, it's up to you all.
Yeah, if you need to, if you wanted two PM or something, it's tweak.
No, I got someone flying in, so I would rather have.
Ten AM, okay, so let's, so we'll do Saturday, July twentieth at ten AM.
And then do you want to do a third one and, and maybe a different time of day, either sort of maybe like four thirty or five, something like that, so somebody could come after work but not have a nighttime?
Could do the Tuesday, the twenty-third? Or Thursday, the twenty-fifth?
I can't do the twenty-fifth, my family's coming up, we're not going to be around.
Could be the Monday, the fifteenth?
July fifteenth?
Yep.
Yep, I could do that.
I thought we already had the fifteenth. That works to me.
Okay, let's do the.
So from noon to one thirty.
We thought maybe, my suggestion would be maybe to have that one at five so that folks who are coming after work, so now you're getting a weekend of lunchtime and an after work, and then obviously people can come to the hearing.
And there isn't a council meeting that night?
There is, but will be done before the council meeting.
Yep.
Oh.
Five to six thirty.
Five to six thirty, okay. Because they start at seven, okay. Works.
So that on the Monday, I have Helen, Michael and Donna as available? And then I'll check in with Duncan and with Colin about these. And Paul, are you out of town all of these or are you back on the twentieth?
All month.
Okay. Okay, so just to repeat, Wednesday, July tenth from noon to one thirty. Monday, July fifteenth from five to six thirty. And Saturday, July twentieth from ten to eleven thirty.
Okay.
You can come in for the.
The second, that's what I got.
Do you guys want minutes for these things?
No, we're all set, Sue, thank you, though.
Okay.
Okay.
And also we reserve the right to change our minds, Sue. But we'll give you advance notice if we do.
Thank you, Paul.
We probably don't, but I'm just inserting a little humor. I don't know if she thinks that's funny. Well, it's humorous to me.
Great, that's, that's the stuff I had today.
Michael, you had one thing on minutes when you get to that, two things on minutes.
Yeah. On page two. Well, let's get them up.
On page two, you had Catmat should be Catma.
Anderson should be.
Atherton.
Atherton, yes, I did, I saw that one.
Well, I moved to approve the minutes of June the eleventh, twenty twenty-four, with the necessary corrections that we've. June the eleventh, twenty twenty-four, with the necessary corrections that we've discussed.
And I'll second.
All in paper, uh, moving the minutes.
Aye.
He's got me caught up.
Yeah, that's. They're good minutes.
You are adjourned.
Ready to adjourn. We don't need a motion to adjourn.
Nope.
Nope.
Leave.
Just walk out of here in this.
Get up and go.
Well, I know.